Way, there will be an opportunity for us to phase in a two-way dual language. And what that allows is for what we call Spanish language learners. So students who are English-speaking students, which would want to acquire Spanish as a second language, would be in the class with English language learners. And so it would be a two-way. So their home language is English, they're transitioning to Spanish, so they've become biliterate in both languages. And the other half of the class, their dominant language is Spanish and they're transitioning to English. So it's a two-way model in, in the classroom.
And is that something we might consider in the future?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, that sounds, that sounds very interesting. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. James, Mr. Rosenthal.
Yeah, thank you for that explanation. So, cause I wasn't sure where that came in because I, I went to, was it Tassie-Tasby or maybe SLI, I think it was SLI last summer, San Marcos, I think it was them. ISD put on a, put on a presentation about dual language. And I don't know, I was kinda skeptical, but they were showing how it was really beneficial. And I didn't, I didn't see any data or anything, but I mean, it sounded like it was working well. So that's, thank you for clarifying that. And, and the other thing is, well, two things. So thank you, Dr. Dupree, for also addressing the, the reading academies. Cause what the TEA is asking, it, it kinda aggravates me, cause it, it doesn't make sense unless they're teaching like new reading or something like that. I mean, I would think that most of our teachers can teach how to read. And maybe there's some new strategies or something, but to force teachers, who, most of whom are probably very competent, to go through ten days of training without funding it? And where's the time? Is that gonna extend into the summer? Uh, uh, where, where are you gonna find that time? I mean, that's, that's absurd. And I th- I find it funny that they already have vendors lined up to train people. So, I mean, that kinda tells you something too, you know? Not to be skeptical or anything, but.
If, if I might, Deanna, I'm probably stepping way out of line, but so tell me, you can correct me if you, publicly if you need to. As I understand it, I think the, I think the impetus behind the decision, and we actually, and we see this in our own district. You've got generations of teachers who taught heavily using phonics. And then you've got generations of teachers that taught heavily using whole language and not phonics. What the state is trying to drive us to is using both components. Both are critical. And so that would be the benefit for our district is bringing everyone into alignment. So everyone has mastered, the goal would be everyone has mastered both aspects, cause both are important is what we've really, see, we've moved toward that model
Right.
in our district, but with so many teachers, we've not been able to get all of them through the training and where they need to be with even our expectation of bringing both elements to the table.
Balanced literacy.
And that's, the balanced literacy, and that's, you hear us refer to that, but that's what TEA is trying to do. So we're ahead of it, we've been on there, we've been doing it for a while. But it, it truly is, it's, it's education, we have all seen the flip from whole language to phonics, back and forth multiple times. And what we're trying to realize, it takes both. And so it's just getting all the teachers up to a common language and a common practice. Okay.
Is that what the data, sorry, is that what the data shows? The data shows that it takes both?
Well, we, we, as a school district, our instructional model adheres to the balanced literacy framework. And so we've been, as Dr. Dupree indicated, for the last three years, we've been engaged with the Teaching and Learning Alliance, which, that's who we use at the Early Literacy Center to train our teachers in the balanced literacy framework. But at other elementaries, we have our balanced literacy cadres where we're working with, you know, through that balanced literacy model. So it will allow us to develop, as Dr. Dupree said, a common language, really associated with balanced literacy and get everyone on the same page.
Thank you, Dr. Saavedra. I'd like to thank my fellow board members for their questions and comments. There's a whole lot here, and I think this has been a great presentation, not to go over everything that's just been said, but we've got a lot of wins here, and I think this is a great example of Fort Bend ISD taking it to the next level. So let us know how we can support you. And thank you very much for all your hard work and the presentation that was given and, and all that we're doing as a district. Uh, moving right along, let's go ahead and move to the budget.
I'm gonna hand it over to.
Yeah, that's, I was gonna say, let's go to the budget part of our presentation here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. And as we prepared the budget this year, we've done it based on the staffing allocations that are needed to currently support our existing student population and the strategic priorities that Deanna just walked through with you. So as I show you the budget information shortly, you'll see those numbers incorporated into the planning work that we're doing for the 2021 school year. I want to begin by saying that House Bill Three had a tremendous impact on school finance. And as we put together the budget, we're looking at everything that we do through the lens of how did House Bill Three and Senate Bill Two impact us overall? The items that are indicated up here, that what I'll point out is the Cost of Education Index on the, the first item that was repealed. You all are aware that we talked at length about that during the last budget cycle, indicating that that was worth about fifty-six million dollars to us. Unfortunately, with the changes that were made by House Bill Three, that provision was eliminated, and the changes that they made to the various funding weights did not make us whole. So that is something that is of, of particular concern for us, but I'll talk to you in a moment how that's been mitigated. On the adjusted column, the particular areas that I'll focus on are the basic allotment and the Tier One tax rate and the guaranteed yields in Tier Two. When we put together the budget, we made sure that we incorporated those changes into what we were doing. So the numbers that I show you this evening are indicative of the changes associated with that. And then finally, under the new items, you all are aware that we have the Transition Grant, the next-to-last item on there. Because our district did not receive at least a three percent increase over the old formula, we did qualify for that Transition Grant. That's worth about eighteen million dollars a year for us, and we've included that in there. Now, unfortunately, that does expire after the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, so there are some concerns about the long-term sustainability, but I will indicate that we do have at least two legislative sessions between now and then. One, to prepare for that fiscally, and two, to also lobby in Austin to make sure that they are, let me rephrase that, to advocate in Austin for changes to that to ensure that the, the level of funding that we have to sustain the programs that we're implementing is sustainable over the long term. And then as Deanna mentioned, we have the Full Day Pre-K Program that was implemented this year, that's currently in process. That does continue into the upcoming school year. The thing that I'll mention is that we're using the Early Education Allotment, which is new, as part of House Bill Three. And what I would say is that that is for early readers, if you will, but that assumes that you want to spend all of that money one hundred percent on a pre-K program. Not advocating that we would change anything associated with that, but if we have other reading priorities that need to be addressed, we've utilized one hundred percent of that funding on our pre-K program. So I do wanna point out that that is how we're funding that, and it does not leave a lot of room for the Early Education Allotment beyond that. Some of the other critical factors that influence the budget in addition to House Bill Three and Senate Bill Two would be enrollment growth, property values, and the tax rate, and we'll be discussing each of those as we go through the presentation. The first item is we have received our enrollment growth from the demographer. You'll be hearing from them at the February Board Meeting, but it is indicating that we have about seventy-nine thousand students that will be serving in the upcoming year. That's about a thirteen-hundred student growth. Again, we're using the moderate projection as we typically do during the year. So that is expected in the upcoming year over our PMS and a snapshot from October for, of this year. As we've seen in the past, our special education enrollment continues, continues to grow. We're expecting about eleven percent of our student population to be identified as special education in the upcoming school year. That is an increase of just about one percent over the current year. What I'll say in relation to that, you may recall that the national average for special education students as a percentage of the population is about thirteen percent. So we're expecting, at least for next year and the year after, to see some continued identification as we go through that process. The reason I bring this up is as we put together the budget, we do take into account the additional resources needed to serve those students with those special needs. So the numbers that I show you will incorporate that information as well. For property value growth, we're expecting a five percent increase over the prior year. That will bring our valuation to about forty-three-point-three billion dollars. That does not include the over sixty-five and disabled person exemptions, so when we do more detailed presentations on property value growth as we progress forward, we'll share that information with you. And then just as a reminder on that five percent growth, there have been few years where we have seen below five percent. We feel this is a conservative number. And what I will say is we are actively working, we've been in contact with the Chief Appraiser to schedule a meeting with him to discuss our initial outlook, to make sure it's in alignment with him so that we don't have to come back later in the year and say, we got that number wrong. But at least for initial planning purposes, that's our starting point, and we'll be having those further conversations with the Central Appraisal District in the month of February. For Senate Bill Two, this is probably one of the areas that keeps me up at night. This is the specific bill that caps our valuation growth at two-and-a-half percent on the O and M side. So I do wanna point out, this does not affect the debt service rate, but it does impact our O and M side. And this will be effective for the twenty-twenty-one tax bill year, so this is going to impact us next year. So the way that the, the law is currently written, the state will make up that lost revenue. However, they did not fund it with ongoing funds, and they basically left that to decide in the next legislative session. There was talk of an increase on the sales tax rate, but ultimately, they did not come up with a, with a, a funding source that will make this sustainable over the long term. What I'll say is that this is also turning over the responsibility for calculating the valuation of our property value to TEA, which is something that they have never done before. This has typically been done through the Texas Controller, and they did that through a special tax division, the CPTD, as we have often referred to that. So what we're expecting is that our tax rate adoption will likely be pushed back to late September. I would like to provide more information to you, but at this point, TEA still has not released the mechanism by which this will actually be done and calculated. So we're doing everything through the lens of what we know today. We'll be receiving additional clarification as the year progresses, but at this point, there's still a lot of uncertainty around the full impact of this. The only thing that we can say with absolute certainty is within the current biennium, they have funded the additional growth over two-and-a-half percent that the state would pick up. So we're reasonably sure that we'll receive that additional revenue based on their funding formula. On the other side, we have House Bill Three, and what I'll say there is that you all are recall that when we adopted the tax rate this year, it did include a seven-cent compression of the tax rate, so we went down from a dollar six to ninety-nine cents. As we look forward in our modeling, we are taking that into consideration. It also changed the golden pennies, which are actually one-point-six percent of the basic allotment, so the golden pennies are now worth ninety-six dollars and forty-eight cents. They've also increased the number of golden pennies from six to eight. And as you're aware, we currently have six of those golden pennies. There are two that are available to us. I'll talk, touch on that in just a moment. And then on the Tier Two side, the copper penny yield was decoupled from the Austin yield that's now based on, and that's the same for the golden penny as well, they're now based on the, off of the basic allotment. And it's, the copper penny is set to point-eight percent of, not says eighty percent, it's actually point-eight percent of the basic allotment. So that has changed the value there. Again, the golden pennies are not recapturable, however, the copper pennies remain recapturable. The final item that I'll point out on here is that they recreated Chapter Forty-One. This was a Robin Hood provision, and that is no longer Chapter Forty-One, it's now Chapter Forty-Eight and Forty-Nine of the Education Code. When they did that, you all recall, in, in the past, we had the board take action on our property wealth because we were a Chapter Forty-One district, we had just not reached the point of actually having to pay in. With the way that they've recalculated things, we are no longer a Chapter, what would be Forty-Eight district. So at this point, there's no danger of us having to pay in at this point, and that's not expected for several years. Again, the calculations haven't been fully released, so we don't know at what specific point we may hit that threshold, but we are no longer in danger of having to pay out to the state. And then as I mentioned a moment ago, they, the state switched to current-year property values as opposed to the CPTD, so that will be interesting, although this impacts everyone. The negative impact of that was accounted for, I believe, in this current year, so we will not see really any detriment to our planning purposes in the budget for that. I'd like to walk you through now the nineteen-twenty budget assumptions and how we expect to end this year. Our projected enrollment did come in actually higher than what we were expecting. We used the moderate growth, and we came in at about five hundred students more than what we were projecting over the moderate growth. Our average daily attendance is up slightly, and our property value growth came in at about half a percent higher than what we were expecting. And then our free and reduced count also was up. So a long story short there, when we're looking at our revenues for the upcoming year, we are seeing an increase based on those factors that I'll walk you through in just a moment. So we were asked earlier in the year, or late last year, whether or not we would end this current fiscal year in the black, and we hedged a little bit and said, we'll have better information for you in January. And I am pleased to report, based on what we are seeing, we are expecting to end the year with a surplus of about three million dollars. That takes into account those revenue offsets that I just said. The good news is there, you may recall that we set aside ten million dollars in economic stabilization funding. We will not have to use that money and be able to carry that forward into the upcoming fiscal year based on what we're seeing. And I've been asked for the Latin lesson, I've been a little bit remiss in that, and this is what I like to say, soteris paribus. So basically, all things staying equal, we will see that revenue in the upcoming year, or things ending. What does that mean for our bottom line? When we projected the budget into the, or the adopted budget, was assuming we would have a hundred days in fund balance. We're expecting to have a hundred and six days in our fund balance, which is above our policy requirement of ninety days. So overall, we are expecting things to look much better year-in. I will point out that that one-hundred-day operating reserve and the hundred and six days includes the twenty-one million dollars that we received as part of the Harvey Hold Harmless. So that's part of the reason that that fund balance looks so positive, is we received that at the end of last year, and it was booked in the prior fiscal year, but is benefiting us in how things look this year. Briefly on the revenues, part of the reason that we are seeing some of those increases is the changes to the state funding formula, that's worth about four-and-a-half million dollars. We're seeing some other minor adjustments in there, but the biggest one is the state funding formulas. At the end of the day, eight million dollars of that is associated with those changes. You saw maybe in the prior slide that we're seeing about a seventeen-point-six million dollar increase in revenues. Nine-point-six million dollars of that is TRS on behalf when we true that number up. So that's really an in and an out number that we don't directly benefit from. These are specifically numbers that we'll benefit from in the upcoming year, or in this current year. On the expenditure side, our expenditures are expected to increase by about four-point-seven million dollars net. About four-point-two million dollars of that are the encumbrance rollovers that the board approved in October. And then there are some additional budget adjustments that we're expecting for curriculum writing, that's worth about a half a million dollars for that project to continue. So as we roll into the twenty-twenty-one year, the guiding philosophy that we use to put together the budget is to advance the district goals and objectives. That was the strategic items that Deanna just overviewed with you. The other is to utilize fund balance capacity while we maintain our ninety-day reserve. And then, as I mentioned, there is now an optional golden penny. We are recommending to the board that the board take advantage of that additional golden penny. Essentially, in order to take advantage of that, it has to be approved by unanimous vote of the board to enact that golden penny. And I'll talk a bit about that in a moment and show you what the impact is. And then the final item is that we were looking to try to put off, to the extent that we can, a tax ratification election. And based on the plan that I'll show you tonight, we do have the capacity to at least put that off for one more year without having to ask the voters to increase the tax rate specific to the additional eleven cents that we have available. Looking at our budget assumptions for the upcoming year, as I mentioned, we're expecting enrollment growth at right at eighty thousand. The other big item to point out there, as I mentioned, the property value growth of five percent, and this is one of those areas that I do wanna point out, again, soteris paribus, if things look as they have been the past, each one percent swing either up or down in the property value is about four-point-eight million dollars. So if you recall, last year, we projected five percent, we came in at five-point-four-seven percent. That additional half percent was worth a little over two million dollars. So again, the numbers that we're showing you, when we look at the sensitivity analysis, even though one percent is very small, it has a tremendous impact on our budget overall as we do our planning purposes. And then we are looking at, at some additional growth in our free and reduce, so I won't walk through each of those individually, but these are the specific assumptions that we're looking at as we put together the budget. So how does the forecast look? We haven't looked out beyond twenty-twenty-one at this point, we're not quite at that point yet, but when we look at twenty-twenty-one, I'll go straight to the bottom line and then walk you through things. Our initial look with the items that Deanna reviewed with you, we're at an eighty-nine day fund balance policy requirement, so we do still have some work that we need to do in order to shore up those numbers and find out specifically what's the first priority that we want to fund in, in terms of everything. But overall, you'll notice on there, we have, we're expecting about seven-hundred-and-forty-two million dollars in revenue. That's an increase of seven-hundred, or of about twenty million dollars over our current revenue. When we look at that, about, this does include the additional revenue from that golden penny that is optional, that again, that the board can approve with a unanimous, unanimous vote, that's worth just under six million dollars. So as part, it's an ongoing revenue source, we do recommend that as part of the upcoming budget. As we move to the expenditure side, you'll notice that it's about seven-hundred-and-forty million. That growth from seven-twenty-one to seven-hundred-and-forty million is accounting for the additional growth in the special education population and overall student population growth, so this doesn't include any of the new initiatives. Below that, you'll see the strategic initiatives that we're looking at, the twenty-one million dollars, and that's folded into the overall number of seven-hundred-and-sixty million dollars. So that's, at this point, the budget that we would be looking at in the upcoming fiscal year. The fund balance is two-hundred-and-forty-one million to start with. We would be recommending the use of economic stabilization as we did last year, so we're carrying forward ten million dollars. We would be asking the board to authorize us to use up to fifteen million dollars, or almost sixteen million dollars, to ultimately balance the budget from that. Leaving us with, again, we're at, currently, we're at twenty-four percent or eighty-nine days, we'll be doing work over the next several week, coming weeks and months to basically balance that to ninety days to ensure that when the board ultimately adopts the budget, we meet our policy of ninety-day fund balance requirement. And to close things out, we do have some known unknowns, the biggest one being the long-term sustainability of the state funding. That, again, continues to keep me up at night. The Transition Grant is included in that funding formula that I just showed you, that expires in twenty-twenty-five. We wanna make sure any decisions that we make are sustainable in the long term. And then finally, the Commissioner of Education has not made a determination on how the Tier One calculations are going to occur yet. We're waiting on that. So again, keeping us up at night. And then the tax rate has not been, like, this is all unknown unknowns. We, we're hoping to have better clarification from that. They had, do release videos on an ongoing basis. This is one that we're waiting on to receive final words on that. And finally, the, the actions that we'll see over the coming weeks and months where we'll be asking the board to take action. In February, we intend to bring to you the staffing that will support enrollment growth and potentially some of the new priority items. Moving into March, again, we'll be looking at board to take action on some of the strategic priorities, as well as potential compensation adjustments. I will mention that when we, the information that we showed you previously does not include a general pay increase, although we are continuing to look at that, and we'll be making final recommendations, and ultimately, the budget that we present will either take that into account or look at alternative ways potentially of compensating employees like we've done in the past with the retention supplements. And then April would be when we receive our preliminary tax rule for the tax year twenty-twenty, and then that's also a point at which some of the policy considerations that may be needed as part of the strategic initiatives that we have, where we would be potentially asking the board to take action. May would be when we do our publications and the call of the meeting, and then finally, June would be when we ultimately ask the board to adopt the budget. And then I'm going to, unfortunately, as all this occurs, we receive the certified rule in July, which will tell us what everything ultimately will look like with the tax rate adoption, if everything goes according to plan in September, and assuming TEA is staffed and ready to manage that process. And I'll be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gwynn, we appreciate the presentation. Mr. Rice.
Thank you, Mr. Verdine. And, Mr. Gwynn, I'd like to give a shout-out to you for the excellent presentation you made last Friday at the Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you.
A lot of this material was covered then, and I think every time we make a presentation like that, it helps to inform the community at large, and I'm, my hope is that people will go home and having learned something from your presentation and inform their friends and neighbors, so they'll be encouraged to continue to support our school district. I'm looking at Slide Nineteen, and I, I think I heard you say, each percentage point that of increased property growth, property tax growth, was that worth, how, how much was that worth, five million?
Right at five million.
Right at five million. But although, in the last, let's see, thirteen years, and if we wanna go back longer, we could, our property tax growth has not fallen at two-and-a-half percent or below, except for four times. So in four years out of thirteen, our property tax growth has been above two-and-a-half percent. So if we have the five percent growth this year, am I to understand that we will only be able to, to realize two-and-a-half percent of that growth?
Well, the way that the state is doing it is currently, as, again, what I would say is they have funded it for the current biennium, is any growth above the two-and-a-half percent, the state will basically make us whole for the remaining portion of that. And how that's going to look beyond the current funding year, we don't know yet. But at this point, that is funded, but they are capping our growth, our internal revenue growth at the local level at two-and-a-half percent. We will not be able to exceed, on the local side, two-and-a-half percent growth.
Okay, so for this biennium?
For this biennium.
And when the eighty-seventh meets next year, this time next year, that might change?
Well, I would not expect the two-and-a-half percent cap to change. What I would potentially expect to happen is they either, one, come up with a funding source that makes sure that they can sustain that growth, that local property value grows over the long term, or two, do it as they did this year, and that is punt the can down the road for an additional two-year period.
Okay, so for this, for this budget planning session, we're okay?
That is correct, sir.
And the, I, I wanted to ask you another thing, and that is, in the past, so right about now, you are visiting with the Chief CAD Appraisal District to find out what they project today in January. It's an iterative process, which they'll finalize that in April. Is that, is that what I heard you say?
They will finalize it actually in July. April is the point at which all of the protests tend to come in and be resolved, but by July, we will have finality to that list.
So, but as we go forward with our budget planning, it's this iterative process where we're trying to fund all of our strategic initiatives, but we're also balancing that against what we forecast our revenue is gonna be.
That is correct.
And then, in the past, I believe that the Controller, Glenn Hagar's division, his Controller's Property Tax Division would finally certify this year's tax rolls one year in arrears.
Correct.
Could be next year. So, and then if it went up or down, then we get deigned at that time.
Correct.
And now, the TEA, so the eighty-sixth legislative session ended in, at the end of May last year, so eight months ago, less than a year. They're gonna take over this role, which they've never done before. And I, I, I don't know if they're gonna hire all the appraisers who used to work for the Controller and move them over there. I really don't know what, what's gonna happen, and that's why you're nervous.
That is, the way that they will manage that has not been communicated, and that creates some anxiety on our level, because we don't have certainty on what that process will look like.
And because of this uncertainty, we'll be adopting our budget, we'll be voting on our budget in June, and we will then find out what we're really gonna, the tax rate's really gonna have to be in September.
That is unfortunately the reality that we now live in, based on the eighty-sixth legislative session. Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I wanna thank you for your efforts, and also your predecessor, Mr. Steve Bassett, because I know he was one of the few Chief Financial Officers along with, is it Mr. Smith from Katie ISD? Who is it, from Katie?
Mr. Chris Smith, yes, sir.
Who went to Austin and met with Rick Miller and others to tell them, because of our situation, we were gonna come out on the short end of the stick, and I think that led to, as I understand it, this Transition Grant, which is helping us through for the next, is it, four years?
We will have four years remaining at the end of this school year. It was five years total. It was five years total, so twenty-twenty-five will be the last year of that grant.
Twenty-twenty-five, okay. So we're at forty-three billion dollars in appraised value within our political subdivision. That's, that's, uh, that's a record. Let's see, tax rated up. I think, uh... I really, I am glad to know that we have maintained our own economic stabilization fund, or rainy day fund, and we should all be gratified that we haven't, that we have been prudent in our expenditures, and we still have some of that money that we can carry forward into next year to help fund our strategic initiative. And I, I really think this alignment of our strategic goals, that should drive the budget, because as with any organization, you have to ask yourself, what are we trying to achieve? And how are we going to spend the money to achieve that? And so I think this is really the best that we've been at, and I'm really, I'm proud to be a part of that with you all. So, um, I think you're doing a great job, Mr. Quinn, and, uh, but I need, I need to borrow your Latin book when you're, when you're not busy. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. You said it that very well, and I echo, echo everything that you just said. I have two comments. Mr. Rice touched on this, and I'm not gonna, we don't need to beat this up, but I'm really concerned about the new powers of the T E A, I can't get over that. Um, and I don't have anything else to say about it, but that's really concerning. But as you stated, that's our new reality. Uh, and then, when can we do, when can we vote for the golden penny? Does that need to be in the fall, or can we do that sooner, or what does that look like?
That is correct. So the budget that you adopt would assume, assuming that the board approves the budget as we've currently presented it, making it balanced, would assume that we have the additional golden penny. And then at the point that the tax rate is adopted, if you adopt the tax rate as, uh, presented with the additional golden penny, again, it does have to be unanimous vote in order to take advantage of that, it would be included in the tax rate calculation as part of that vote.
Okay.
Now, as I say that, I do want to point out that T E A has not officially released the guidance on it, that's our initial understanding of how that process will work.
So that's still an unknown?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. We appreciate you and your department and all your hard work. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Rosenthal, I had a comment or question real quick.
So just to clarify, so if, if we did that, then our rate would go up from ninety-nine cents to a dollar, the M and O rate?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much. We will now convene in closed session under the Texas Open Meetings Act, Chapter five five one, and those sections listed in the agenda, for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney on any or all subject matters authorized by law. We are now convening in closed session.